We'll get this meeting going at six thirty four. First on the agenda is. Agenda adjustments. Would like to talk about our flood hazard regs at some point. We will have possibly two hearings coming up in November. So we can kind of go over procedures and things. We shouldn't really talk about the actual violations or. But yeah. So second on the agenda is here citizens. Let's see, we have Eric. Okay, he must have his off. Okay, actually, does anybody have an agenda?
I forgot to bring my.
Oh, you know, never mind. Here we go. Okay. Oh, no, those are the meeting minutes.
I have meeting minutes.
Okay. Well, that's okay.
You said the agendas out, or should I ask Jen?
I did. I sent them.
I don't get them.
You know.
I think you did.
I did. You know, okay, I better get a better email then.
Okay.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, be back in India at Allah.
No.
Yeah, okay, so that's what I was sent.
That was my old. The town of Cavendish one. I'm Bruce. B R P at Yahoo.
Okay. Oh, that's it. Okay.
Yep.
Yep, it's the one I've had forever. Gotcha. All right.
But the agenda Tim is. Call order, adjust agenda, approve meeting minutes, here citizens, new business, which is to review. Act two fifty application for the Fletcher Farm Trails.
Yep.
And then continue on to subdivision regs, full business review correspondence. Discuss any other business and then adjourn.
Okay, so why don't we go straight to the meeting minutes? We have them from September thirteenth. And August thirtieth. So have a chance to go through them. You guys wanted time to go through them or?
Right, I read it already.
Already? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the August thirtieth twenty twenty three meeting minutes?
I'll propose a motion.
I'll second it. Second. Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, then passed. We'll go on to the September thirteenth. Meeting minutes. Someone want to make a motion to accept?
I'll propose again.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, no, no one knows. Okay. Next is we'll go right to the Fletcher Farm Act two fifty application. For the Fletcher Farm Trails. I did send a application to everybody, but I have one here if anybody wants to look at it.
Why are they making you do an act two fifty for that?
Because.
It involves more than.
No, no. Normally you wouldn't for bike trails. So have like a certain, you could do a certain mileage without. But since Fletcher Farm is already involved in act two fifty.
All right.
They're making us do it. So. Basically, the town plan, I think that's criteria and nine. Ten, yeah, ten. So that's. I mean, I'm pretty sure it's. Our town plan. Complies with our town plan. I know the last time there was some issues with safety and all that and. We are meeting with the Ludlow Police Chief Friday. Just to go over access and all that. The fire department has already looked at it. So. And I did send out plans. They haven't changed.
Do you foresee any pushback on that?
I don't know. I don't think so. I mean, we have, we have to go in front of the D R B in Ludlow. For act two fifty review. I know Chief Billings had some issues, but I think hopefully they're resolved. He was saying that there was no way to rescue people with a. Cause the police department doesn't have a four by four or side by side, but the police, the fire department does. So. Yeah. Like, you know, it's probably doing due diligence.
Yeah.
Yep, that's all good. So yeah, criteria ten is on page twenty. Traffic, there's not really, there's an eight car parking lot. Which should be sufficient, but if it gets really popular, they have to expand it. So it goes through. You know, does the municipality have a duly adopted plan? Yes. All through. There's really no local permits required.
Of course, this only pertains to the portion of land that's in Cavendish.
That's correct.
As far as we're concerned.
That's right.
Yeah, so we're really only concerned with ten.
Right. That's right.
Yep.
And half the trails, about half are in Cavendish. It's half and half. So.
That goes in two towns.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions or.
I sure, I certainly don't want to hold it back in any way.
No.
I've just looked at them and it's all pretty much. The questions are boilerplate and the answers are.
That's right.
So it's a go with me.
Okay.
Any motion or?
Probably a motion would be good. To, I would say, make a motion to.
Give approval to criteria ten.
Yeah, approval to criteria ten. That says that this project does conform to our town plan.
I submit.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Just, can you say the motion number then?
Planning Commission finds that the Fletcher Farm Trails does comply with criteria ten. In the act two fifty application. And that it does conform to our town plan.
Which are listed A through G of the application.
Yes. And I'm not sure if a letter is necessary.
Did they request one?
No. No. So, I mean, maybe if they do, we could write one.
Yeah, I don't think, usually they do, but wait for them to ask.
Yeah, yes. I mean, we're hoping it gets approved pretty soon, but construction won't start until next year. So. Okay.
Involve a lot of coves.
Oh, no, nope. Might be some small bridges over a couple seasonal streams, but yeah, all hand-built. So we had a motion. Okay, so we have to hold on.
Second.
Second, okay.
We had discussion.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? None? Okay, motion is passed. Okay, so we got subdivision regs next. Okay, I did start to put all the modifications in. I'm not done. I figured I'll wait till the next meeting. I got them all in red, but I think we started, wouldn't we like? Didn't we, we didn't get all the way through section three, did we? No, we didn't.
I think we've got up to three eighty.
Three eighty.
That's where I kind of have the last notes.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And Bruce, I can send you kind of what we, and then you could go back through the first part.
I was wondering why it wasn't given correspondence. Now I know it was around email ago.
Okay, I apologize for that.
No problem at all.
Yes, we'll take care of that. Okay. So section three eighty, dedication of open space and common land. Man, I think it's important to have this in here. Oh, did you, do you have one?
No.
Oh, certainly. Ain't got an extra. Here we go. Yeah, we're on page.
Seventeen.
Looks like fifteen. Oh, you do?
I'm sixteen.
Creation of common land.
Yep.
And preservation. Seventeen on mine. It's not on yours?
Seventeen.
Okay.
Seventeen.
Maybe you're working with T J and Coffees.
Yeah, I mean, we only got. Okay, well, at least we, section three eighty, I guess we'll look at that later. So it doesn't matter for now, but. So it doesn't say that they have to do it.
That they have to, that.
Right, they're not forced. If you do a subdivision, you don't have to have open space. But if you do.
It's just preserving what is already declared. As in three eighty number one.
Well, it would be. Up to the developer if they wanted to preserve open space, like it could be farm fields or sensitive areas. I mean, the planning commission could require it. But it doesn't have to happen. Like on a big subdivision, I can see where that would be.
I can see too, but we don't have that much space so far, Dave.
Right. Now give everybody a chance to read through it and see if there's anything.
Are we just looking at this up to section three ninety exactly?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't see any issues on that so far.
I don't either. You know, this, even without subdivision regulations, this is. Mostly what went on with the journey road development twenty five years ago.
Oh, what's that with?
With the, the setting aside for wastewater, because they, you know, they took all that on themselves. They, they, they don't have individual septic systems there. They've got a community one.
Oh, they do. I didn't know that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have a homeowners association. So, I mean, generally now with subdivisions, larger ones, they have homeowners associations. Cause the town won't plow the roads anymore. They won't maintain them. But, okay. Does anyone have any other comments on it or? I mean, it's pretty standard. Wow, we're moving right along. Want to go to the next section?
Three ninety?
Three ninety disclosure. Okay, whenever. Applicants. So basically, I think three ninety says that. If they're presenting to the planning commission and they know they want to phase it in or do additional, that they need to.
Show their intentions.
Show their intentions, yeah. So that makes sense. Okay, Article four, administration and enforcement. This is probably gonna be, I mean, this is all boilerplate. We're gonna have to. Have a plan before we put it to a vote of how it's gonna be administered, like who's gonna be the administrative officer. I know the regional planning commission said that they might take that role on in small towns.
Great.
Which would be ideal.
Otherwise you end up having to get, find somebody that's willing to work fifteen hours a week.
Right.
Just like what they did in Chester. Yeah, why not, why not use the regional planning commission?
I agree, and they're removed too, so.
They have the, they, they certainly have the knowledge and, you know, the mapping and all that stuff at their fingertips.
That's right. That's right.
Do we have any idea like how many? Like how many applications will the town see in, in a year?
I don't know, looking.
Less than five.
Yes. Yeah, looking back at what's, what I see going on right in the back roads appears to be about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now it's something that would be overly. It's, it's not like you're getting hundreds or something like.
No, 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 no. I mean, we have had some. Some big projects. I think I mentioned that one off of Carlton Road. Down in Whitesville near you. That six hundred unit down by the.
Up in the back?
Yeah. We get projects like that occasionally that come into town. It's like unbelievable. I mean, it would change the whole character. But that was right before I read, and then they went away.
Yeah, and I think that, that if I recall, I was, that whole project was very undercapitalized.
Okay.
And it just was a.
Didn't really make sense.
Imagine sixty, twelve hundred, six hundred to twelve hundred extra cars on Route thirty one.
Right, right.
Anyway.
So that's something we can. Basically, the administration goes if there's a minor subdivision, which I think we agreed is anything four lots and under. Which would just be, they still have to follow the regulations, but. You know, the administrative officer, officer can just issue a permit. If it's over for, then it comes to the planning commission. And there's like sketch plan review where they just bring in loose sketches and we go over it. It's, usually takes a couple of hearings. And then the, like the final hearing is like their final plan, their Mylar that they submit to the town. So.
And how, who would be, you know, say someone does, you know, a three lot subdivision and get approval. Then they don't follow what they're, what they say they're gonna do. Who, who would that be? I guess who, who makes sure they do what they're saying they're gonna do?
Yeah, that would be, I guess the administrative officer would issue a violation.
Yeah, and the, the, the town manager would become involved and the select board would take action.
Right, the select.
I guess like who would, you know, if you're doing it up in the woods where you might not see it from the road, is there some sort of a, you know, hey, well, you know, we come and check at. You know, these stages and, you know, and I guess who would that?
They should be, yeah. I mean, it would be a combination of the planning commission or rec, regional. Cause I mean, they have, they'll have to do like access permits. So that would be the.
That's the time, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the town manager. And then the select board would enforce it, like if there's any fines or whatever. Yeah, so. I guess fees, we'll have to figure out fees. Yeah, cause they have to cause for publishing notices. Conducting public hearings, administrative review.
Filing fees for.
Filing fees. So I guess we can look at other towns and see. What that, what they do and then just come up with a number. Or a recommended number. So let me write this down, look at other towns.
In the following four twenty dash three, it talks a little bit about the guarantee. With a bond in some places.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes the town can have them do like a performance bond. Where the developer sets money aside to ensure that they do everything there, you know, in terms of infrastructure. I mean, I don't think that happens a lot though. Do you know? I mean, I haven't heard of towns requiring. I think it's.
No, I wish that, I wish that the town had done a performance bond on the Velco subdivision. I mean, the Velco. Improvement went in and also when the solar farm did and did to cover the damage that's been done to Quinfield and Road.
Right.
Well, wasn't that, didn't they come to the town and the town said, no, we don't want you to come on this road and they went on Bixby? Instead?
Oh, you mean on twenty mile stream? You're talking about, they came to Cavendish and wanted to run, run their heavy equipment. On twenty mile stream. Yes, they went on, but it also. Involved the, the portion of. This is on Bixby, Barker Road, the portion of Barker Road that's in Cavendish. They brought in all of that crushed stone. You remember that somewhere you, you remember when they did all of that improvement?
Yeah.
That was for, but that, that was for the, the solar field. That wasn't for the Velco project. That was first.
Got it.
Velco, it was only because of.
I thought they, cause they had that, they had that big transformer that was like that huge trailer that was parked down at. At Black River Produce and then they had to come up. I thought they came up through Bixby because they didn't want them.
I don't remember that.
I don't know. I mean, that would be a good example, you know, if there's something where they would impact the town roads where they'd have to be repaired. That would be where a performance bond would come in.
That was a shame.
Yeah, that road's in rough shape now, quite failing.
Something's failed.
Yeah. Okay.
You have to drive on that? One pound? Yeah. All the time. It's awful.
It is awful. Yeah, it's terrible. There's no money. There's no money to fix it.
I mean, like, I feel like at least put gravel in it or something, but like the, you have to drive in field, like it's. Yeah, unless you like, if you're in a small car, you're bottoming out in spots.
Okay. So we go to hearing notice requirements. Basically, we have to, we're warrant a hearing fifteen days. It's pretty standard, like pretty much the same as like our planning commission. Like town plans. Appeals and all that.
You just have to stay up on the, the posting of all of this.
That's right.
Including, you know, this is section event that the hearing is canceled. You have to post that it was canceled. It's so easy to forget that stuff.
Yeah. Yep. Okay, hearings. Planning Commission shall follow their rules of procedure. Which is basically Robert's rules, right? Yeah, that's what we do. So basically. We hold the hearing and then we can recess the hearing. Doesn't have to, we don't have to have a decision. That evening, we would go into deliberative session. So we'd have the hearing and then once we closed the hearing, you know, it could be a couple of meetings depending on the size of the project. We close the hearing. And basically go into executive session and we discuss it amongst ourselves. And then come up with a decision. When I'm not sure, I think. If it's still a public meeting, I think we still have to take notes. Have to find out that, that probably so.
We used to do deliberate, deliberative sessions all the time when I was on the development review board in Chester. And I don't remember outlast Julie.
Okay.
Because the, the, in spite of the open meeting law, the purpose of the deliberative session is so you, you can discuss stuff. Without people jumping out of their seats saying, that's wrong. What are you doing that for?
Exactly. Yeah.
And this has a provision for people essentially being granted party status. In any regulatory hearing of the commission, there'll be, be, show being an opportunity for each person wishing to achieve status. As an interested person for purposes of achieving. Such status for achieving such status are met. The commission shall keep a written record of the name, address and participation of each of these persons.
Does that, do they have to be abutting landowners? Or it could be anybody?
I interpret that as it could be somebody that lives up the road that's objecting to, or down the road that's objecting to additional traffic. Which the same as party, being granted party status at an act two fifty hearing.
Right, I mean, generally they, act two fifty, there's a budding neighbors.
No, but you could get people, people coming in. If it's a large enough project, the Sierra Club can become a party.
Oh, right, right. Okay.
Is that up to the, the planning commission to kind of take, you know, if it's someone who, you know, is. Like their status or, or not their status, but like their stake in it, you know, if they're a neighbor. Or if they live across town, those objections is, are those waived?
They don't have the same weight.
Yeah, and that's just up to the.
And it looks, the way I see this, it looks like we, it's called a party status. Looks like we determine whether someone is entitled to it or not.
And you just keep notes, like the addresses and so.
Right, so any information goes, any information that we get. I don't think it has to be mailed out to each person. We'll have to look into that, but I think that, like abutting. Property owners and other regulatory, they should have automatic party status, but if it's someone down the road, they should apply.
Yes.
It should be our decision whether or not, I mean, that's my opinion. Rather than, cause that could get a little chaotic.
Should be an opportunity for people, for some wishing.
Right.
And it's not automatically saying that.
Right. Okay, under section four fifty.
Are you talking about four thirty?
Oh, just, um, section under hearings three.
Okay, okay, right.
Yep. That's just the state law, section four fifty. Okay, to demonstrate that the criteria for achieving such status are met. Okay, so that covers it. Okay, the officers of the commission may administer oaths. And compel the attendance of witnesses and the production of material germane to any issue under review. I mean, how important do you think is to make people take an oath, I mean?
None, 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 well, I mean, if you, of course, the district environmental commission would have been totally on, involved with that six hundred unit development. On Carlton Road, they'd be all over that.
That's right.
They'd be taking, they'd be taking oaths from anyone that spoke.
Right.
Because that would be a, you know, that would be a mega here.
Right, right, I mean, it's basically saying that you're not going to lie.
Right, and you could have opinions, but you'd have to have them backed up with something, I suppose.
That's right.
And we take notes, so.
Yeah, yeah, and they're televised. Okay. Okay, it looks like, you know, we have a, we have to issue a decision within forty five days after the German.
Is that pretty standard?
I think so, yeah, that's standard.
Now. Have you seen anything in here that says if a, if a party doesn't like our decision, how they appeal it?
Yes.
Where, I don't see it.
It's, well, on my, mine is page twenty one.
What is the title of it?
It's decisions of the planning commission.
Here it is. Decisions of the administrative officer?
Right here, decisions of the planning, any interested person who has participated in a hearing of the planning commission may appeal a decision. Rendered in that, so after the planning commission say they deny a permit before forty five days. Any interested person. Who has participated, that's the key in the hearing.
So what was your question about the, if somebody's appealing the decision?
Well, I don't have the same, I don't have the same text as you. See, here's my page twenty one.
No, you have due to pages.
But, you know, what section is this? Section four fifty appeals.
Okay, any interesting person may appeal a decision or act of the administrative officer.
Oh, here we go, yes.
Okay, I'm all right.
Yeah, 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 you have this, it's just somehow.
Get right on to the next page.
Yeah.
Notice appeal should include the name, whatever just from shoulder public hearing on a notice of appeal within sixty days. Or she'll give public notice.
So the board has a decision to, to, um, deny the appeal or grant more, more?
We could, the planning commission could deny.
Number five, yeah. Four fifty, four fifty one and then number five it says.
Oh, gotcha.
May reject an appeal without a hearing and render decision within ten days.
Four fifty.
Four fifty dot one.
Oh, gotcha.
Number five. So your question was, what if somebody doesn't like?
Doesn't like our decision.
Then they go to environmental court.
Yeah, but that's.
So then do they go through?
That's true, that's true, in Act two fifty proceedings, I've got to call Jason and see whether, you know, where does it? Does it end with our decision, you could always appeal somewhere.
Or could you appeal to, to the plant, the regional?
No, they wouldn't, no, it would.
So what would be the next step?
Where'd you, where'd you get these?
This was from Jason, these are actually Springfield's.
Okay, I'm going to ask Jason, if somebody doesn't like our decision and they, and they want to appeal our decision, where do they go?
Right, I thought it was environmental court, I don't think it's the select board. But it could be, yeah, we should ask Jason. Okay. Where does he go after?
So they, do they appeal to, to the planning commission again?
Right.
Or first? They, planning commission say, says, no, this is our decision, then they would go somewhere else, but first step is appealing here.
Yeah, and we want to, what we want to know by asking Jason is where, where do they appeal if they don't like, like what we've done? For our decision, put it that way.
What's a situation where you would, um, the, the planning commission make a decision? They would appeal back to the planning commission on that same thing, why, why would they make a different choice?
Would they give, give different information or?
You mean, they, or they, or they amend their application, say, well, you know. You evidently don't like this, how about if we do that?
Okay, I guess, I guess for that, yep.
Or if there's new evidence, say after the hearing was closed?
Yep.
That they found some new evidence that might support not approving it?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, they, decisions of the planet, any interested person. Okay, may appeal the, the decision. Okay, here we go, a decision rendered in that proceeding within thirty days of such decision. To the Vermont Environmental Court.
Okay.
So it does go?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, got it.
What section was that?
It was, uh.
Four fifty dot two?
Four fifty, yes, dot two, yes.
Yep, here it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, okay. And then it goes down, three, four fifty point three, interested person, they define what that is.
And in that time between, uh, in that appeal, basically, the project is just on standstill. Until someone makes a decision.
Right. That's what's supposed to happen.
So you could, you could get, you could say, hey, you're good to go with the project, you start and then, you know, fifty eight days into the project, they say, you know, you go to an appeal. You're kind of on standstill.
I think, well, they have to do it within, there's a certain amount of time.
Is this, is it sixty days for the appeal?
Well, we have forty five days.
Make the decision.
To make the decision. Okay, let's see where it says here. Okay. Any interested person may appeal a decision or act of the administrative officer, land use administrator, under these bylaws. By filing a notice of appeal with the secretary of the board of adjustment, which would be the planning commission, with you. Or the town clerk, if no secretary has been elected within fifteen days. Of the date, so.
Okay.
I mean, I guess they could start if they get their decision on that forty sixth day.
Yeah.
And then someone could come in.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, they always, they, they always caution you, you have our approval, but somebody can be waiting in the wings.
Right.
You, they'll tell you, you proceed at your own peril.
That's right.
Yeah, they'll say that, they'll, they'll say that in the, in the, we're not going to tell you to go ahead. But you're, we're not stopping you from going ahead, but there is a, there is a chance of appeal that could bring it all to an end.
That's right.
Yep.
Or at least a standstill, yeah. Okay. So we're marching right through.
Yeah, we're almost done.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the definitions, we can just go over those. Do we want to go to section four sixty, recording requirements?
Sure.
Yeah, that's, that'll trip you up.
Right.
That seems pretty normal.
This is good, under section four seventy, the planning commission can. If there's extraordinary and unnecessary hardships that may result from strict compliance with these bylaws. Basically, we can waive some of the requirements.
It just assumes that you have some good judgment and, and you want to do the best for everybody.
Right, right, so, you know, if there's a special case where, I mean, we can kind of modify these, which is good to know.
We did it.
Okay. So I guess we just need to discuss how we want to move forward in getting this out to the public, I mean, like on forum, we can. Like some kind of outreach, we want people to know about it. I mean, we have our meetings, they're televised and it's on the agendas, but.
So I guess one thing we'll need to do is to post it here. And where else?
Cavendish connects.
Cavendish, yeah, Margot. You know, we can have some kind of presentation, even like a, you know, something on the wall, like a.
Is it worth, like, seeing if, like, running this by Jason, so?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And like, oh, yeah, like, yes, I like your changes, but, you know, if you do this, then you might want to think about that be- before.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Do we want to get him in for the fifteenth? Because I can, I'll go ahead and make all these or we can get him in, I can make whatever changes.
Just send him a copy.
And then send him a copy.
Fifteenth of October.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's like a working meeting for us here.
Okay. And of course, we have to have hearings. But. Because I'm, I'm still a little gun shy from the last time we tried this. I'd like to see if, I'd like to try an informational meeting.
Right.
Before we, before we say, now we're going to have a hearing.
Absolutely.
Like me with Jason on the fifteenth and then that next one, assuming, I guess, I don't know if we have the other, like those. The flood stuff, but having that, like, hey, let's sit down and chat before the, before opening up.
Maybe, uh, like November fifteenth then, or December first, or an open forum. But how do we get people, maybe have Jason come in on the October fifteenth? To kind of go over it and then if we make any changes to it.
And after that, we're ready to publish theoretically?
Yeah. Yep. And then, so, yeah, it would be like an open forum. Maybe Jason could help us with that, with like a PowerPoint presentation, you know, what are subdivision regulations, what they're not. You know, kind of, that'd be the first thing. Because that's what people are going to, you know, the people who are against it, they're going to look at these and say, well, look at all these, you know, requirements and all, I mean.
And standards too.
And standards. We have to be able to. Back them up, but. I think that would be good, and have Jason here or somebody from the regional planning commission as well to help answer questions.
Would November fifteenth be too early to have that open forum?
Probably.
Okay, because I just, with the holidays and stuff, like.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
After Thanksgiving, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, so maybe early December, I don't know when, like, people's holiday parties and stuff start happening, then.
Probably be, we should go early, like, we could have it at our regular meeting. Depending on how those, the hearings go, because they may get extended, or it's a completely separate night.
Depending on the agenda, I guess.
Well, we, it wouldn't even be a planning commission meeting, we would just be like an open forum, we would be here and. And present it and answer any questions. Maybe have some snacks, or it doesn't have to be here, it could be somewhere else.
What was the big success, the spaghetti dinner?
That was, way back when, where, you remember that? I don't know if you're on that, when we tried to get zoning.
No, I wasn't in for the zoning.
We had a lot of people for the spaghetti dinner and it got, still got voted down.
Yeah.
Spectacularly, that wasn't too far off, but.
I feel the subdivision regulations, why, why did you try zoning without subdivision regulations? Yeah, I didn't even know, I didn't know you could do that.
I don't know. It's thirty something years ago.
Regulations had to come first, but I, I feel there's a different, um, different feeling in the town about it.
I think so.
And I think most people that are reasonable think that there should be something to.
Right.
Not, not legislate the, the use of the property, but to protect other people from. You know, bad driveways and slopes that are simply not suitable.
Drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's.
Are we selecting a date yet or probably, what is the next step?
Well, I think probably, let's see, should we not have it during a planning commission meeting, just to make it?
Is this the hearing or informational?
Just informational.
It could be without the planning commission.
Yeah. Because we should be televised, yeah, that's fine, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if you did that, like, early December and then, you know, once after the New Year, you could get into the, the hearing and stuff and give people some time to sit on it.
Right, well, with our goal, because we do, we'd have the open forum informational meeting and then. The planning commission hearing. And then select board hearing, and then it goes to a town vote. Ideally, if we can do it by March meeting, but.
That would be great.
That would be ideal.
If you had that public hearing for the first meeting in January. Is it after, like, could the select board have theirs in February?
They could. But then we'd have to warn it for the town meeting, yeah, it would be a tight schedule.
Could be part of the town, it would be part of the warning that goes out.
That's right.
On meeting.
That's right, because they go out early February?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Yeah. We'll have to talk to Rick about that and see, I mean, it might, it might be aggressive, but.
Let's plan a tight, aggressive schedule and see if we have to adjust it.
Yes, because if the hearing goes on, if it's, the hearing gets adjourned and goes to another month, then.
Then it continues to direct on.
Right, and then, I mean, it can get voted on, you know, they could have a special vote in September or July or whatever. So, but that would be nice. All right, so I'll, I'll contact.
It'll be good if we could.
Yeah.
Pull that off, we have to back the calendar back and.
Right.
See if there's a, see if there's enough time between, you know, the thirty and forty five and sixty day stuff, you gotta just.
Right.
Sit there and map it out.
Map it out, yeah. So. So if, you know, if we got, our next meeting would be. The eighteenth of October. And then we could do. November first would be our next meeting, we could do a forum then. Well, that's same, same night we have the flood hazard review. That might be too much.
Perhaps.
I don't know what people think.
Holiday time, I think you could get away with holding meetings. Anything before December tenth.
That's right.
When you run into holiday.
Yeah.
Stuff.
So the flood hazard review, how, how long do you anticipate that running?
It's hard to say.
Thought so.
Might be pretty extensive.
Could be pretty extensive, yeah, I mean, it could go an hour. Depending on who shows up. I mean, we wouldn't make any decisions that night, oh, well, we would close the hearing and then we have, we would have forty-five days, so we could make a decision that night or wait. So.
And that's a similar process where we have that hearing and then go into executive session?
That's right. That's right. And I'll. I'll go through everything, all the procedures too for next meeting, and Jason will be here, he can kind of guide us.
So you're gonna make the changes, send them to Jason, invite him to then.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth meeting.
Yep. Then November first would be the next meeting.
Of flood hazard.
Flood hazard, but then when would we, when would we want to do the forum, should we do that that same night, or?
I'd like to see if we could do it the same night.
Let's try it.
Okay.
I, I don't.
Because we might have a good population.
Right.
Could you do it before, like, like five thirty to six thirty?
We could.
And, or, you know, just so you have that hour and you can get it done with versus people having to wait around for that flood hazard thing that may take longer?
Well, one thing, we'll probably want to do a site visit for the flood hazard stuff, like at six.
Dark.
Or five, or maybe earlier.
It'd be starting, start getting dark at four thirty.
Yeah.
After the time changes.
Right.
Which like, what site hazard?
Well, we should go look, like a site visit to go see these different properties.
With the public?
Yeah, it would be like before the hearing, that's typically.
It'll be getting dark, it'll be dark.
We'd have to do it at like three, three?
Three thirty.
Yeah.
You know, you just headlight timing.
Yeah.
Four fifteen.
Right.
That time of year.
Does that work with people's schedule?
That would be out.
Okay.
He has to be at work.
Right, yeah, I get it.
I can make whatever work.
I can.
Okay.
Time changes in the fall.
Follow week of what?
I think you're talking about the one. I think that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the time changes the fall.
It is, it's not the third week of October anymore.
No, they, somebody changed it, somebody.
November fifth. All right, then it can be done as long as it's done quickly.
That's right, what time would you get out?
Five.
Five? I mean, we could do it at five fifteen?
Just slide on over there.
That's right.
He's got about, what, twenty steps?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get all that information together, so yeah, we should have site visits, just so everybody can see it. But I'm not sure how that works, we'd have to get permission from the landowner, I don't know.
Well, what's going to be determined on these site visits?
Just to get an idea of what the violations are, or the situation, just.
Yeah, I don't have much context with those pictures that have been sent out, like, I understand, but like, I, it's really hard to.
I mean, typically, you go to site visits, like before the hearings.
Yeah.
Just so you, people can see what's going on.
Have any violations been, been cited?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Well, that's because I didn't have.
Send to your old email.
To what?
I sent it to your old email.
Okay, I don't wanna, okay, send them to me.
I will, yeah, yeah, because we probably, I mean, we shouldn't really be discussing them.
No.
No.
No, I don't want to.
Yeah, so, but I'll email them to you. All right, so we're, November first then, we'll do the, do the hearing, so I guess we'd have to do the forum afterwards. Yeah.
It looks like that flood hazard, because we're going to do the site visit, and then come back and do the, do the actual work of that, I think, trying to fit that forum and be really tight. Yeah, what if you did it like the fifteenth of November?
The forum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe, and that, that could be like a short, a short meeting, but.
Yeah, very sure.
It would allow the forum.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, yeah, it'd just be a forum, it'd be, it doesn't have to be a warned meeting.
But the public should be advised.
Right, right, I'm just, right, I'm just saying, that, that doesn't have to be a planning commission meeting.
Okay.
I mean, we would put out a warning and all that, but I think that's how that would work. Like, we wouldn't conduct any other planning commission business, we wouldn't go over meeting notes or anything, it would just be the forum.
Forum for the subdivision bylaws?
Yes, so with the fifteenth?
Yep.
Okay, November fifteenth. And then, let's just kind of work through the numbers, so then. If we had our first hearing. It's got to be more than fifteen, we could potentially. Well, it probably wouldn't be until January, like our January meeting would be our planning commission. And then February would be select board.
What's the, what's the timeline, how long do you have to warn the public hearing?
Fifteen days.
Could you not do that, like first week of December?
We could, I guess it would depend on, say if we get a lot of people here, they'll pick up in arms on certain things, we may want to consider a rewrite.
Yeah, which we're gonna have to have a meeting to do that.
Yeah.
Is that something that we could decide after that informational meeting?
Sure.
And that would still give us, because the first Wednesday of December would be the sixth. I'm trying to even know, or do we meet the first Wednesday?
First Wednesday, yeah.
Could give us at least that fifteen days to have the public hearing.
That would, that would give us, if everything goes smoothly, that would give us a good jump, and then the select board could have theirs in January. And then that would leave plenty of time for the town meeting.
And if it doesn't go smoothly, that's a good indicator that, you know, it's gonna take a while, so.
That's right.
No need to rush into it, because it probably won't make it on the.
That's right.
Town meeting day anyways.
Yep.
That'd be all right too.
Yeah, no, I mean, planning is a slow process, and sometimes it doesn't go as quick as you want, but.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah. Okay, so, then, I'm just gonna write this down, so PC hearing, what do we say, like the first? Yeah, December.
November first is the, would be the flood hazard regulation stuff.
Yep.
November fifteenth would be the informational meeting.
Yep.
Public hearing is to be determined based on. Feedback from the informational hearing.
All right, still meeting October fifteenth.
We're still meeting in October eighteenth.
Yep, with Jason, with Jason.
That's right.
Yep, to go over.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'll see what his availability is. Okay, is there anything else on this?
No.
Okay. I mean, I guess the flood hazard stuff, we can, we've kind of already discussed it, but we could discuss it further, just all the procedures when Jason's here. So unless anybody has any other questions on it. I know. Stephen Plunkert had something he wanted to discuss on the housing, but he's not here, so that'll have to get tabled.
And is, is that the flood hazard stuff? Do we just make a decision like, yes, this is allowed, or no, it's not allowed? Is that kind of what we're tasked with doing?
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay.
For after you've said what I think is.
Oh, well, I think, yeah, we could make a decision, but we have to, it almost has to be like evidence, you know, we have like to base, say, these are the facts, such and such is in the hundred year flood plain, you go through a whole.
Yeah, we have the maps, we have.
Yep.
The evidence of, of, I guess, the site visit.
That's right.
And witnesses.
Yep, and then you'd write something, you know, that, that's, you know, the board has decided that it's either in compliance or not in compliance, you kind of present the evidence, and then you do a decision.
Okay, and. In other, not necessarily talking about flood hazard regu- regulations, but in other towns. Nearby towns. Zoning boards have made, made, rendered opinions or decisions, and planning commissions have, and the people haven't liked it. And they've gone to the select board. And cried, and the select board said, no, you don't have to do that.
And they have that authority?
They, they did in Chester.
Wow, wow, then they must have it here.
I don't think. I, I just think that if somebody is going to grieve themselves to the select board, we have to be here to offer our defense, because if you have a, if you have a board that's duly authorized to conduct things like planning affairs, and you get, you get derailed by select board decisions, it brings up the question, why do you have, why do you have a planning commission?
Exactly, yeah.
I don't think that would be a problem with the select board also, but it has happened.
Right, right. Okay. I think correspondence, I did get something from the, for the power dam, they're doing an analysis of it. I think I have it here, it's just for our information.
Is it concerning water quality or safety?
Safety, yeah, let's see if I have it here. Oh, yeah, here we go.
Is this a ten year review?
I think so. It's some kind of review, but a engineering firm conducted. Scoping document two for the Cavendish hydroelectric project. They're looking at preliminary view of any of the environmental issues associated. It's just, I just got this, so I haven't really.
Okay.
I mean, I can pass it around to everybody's. You know.
I remember the old select board, this is like, like, early to mid eighties, that was up for its FERC review. And the, you know, at that time. The Parks and Recreation came here, and they, and they had a presentation about, they wanted to clean the land up around the, around the dam, and on the, on both sides, they wanted to put erect trails and picnic tables.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Remember that?
Yeah.
Select board set them packing.
Yeah.
And they said, get out of here, we don't want any of that.
No.
We don't, places, that place is enough of a hazard that we don't want to be attracting people to it.
Yeah, because once you put, I remember that, because they were gonna put fences up, and then, okay, then the fences become unmaintained, and then. Yeah, I think they just, they just wanted to leave it.
I remember that poor woman from the state, she looked, she was crestfallen, she said, really? You don't want, you don't want us to improve the site?
No.
Okay.
But, yeah, improving a site can be done in different ways, in that particular case, it was attracting people.
That was Tom Lazatera, bless him, he just.
I mean, it's basically, they want to just keep doing things, continue operating the way they have.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think there's any new, nothing really exciting in here.
Anything about impounding so much water, they flood half the town?
I don't know, I didn't, I don't know, but, I don't know, I think that's. I think this is just a.
Three times they've done that.
Yeah.
Nineteen twenty-seven, no, four times, nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen seventy-three, Irene, and then most recently, that's been, that stuff has happened because that dam is too high and they don't lower the water fast enough. That's why it takes a new route and goes knifing through the canyon down here.
Okay. Right.
In twenty-seven, no one knew that that was unstable ground behind where the eleven houses that got washed out were.
Right.
And when it started churning through there, it scoured right down to bedrock, you can see in the picture if it's even in here.
Oh, right, I remember that picture.
You know, you looked, there was, there was, you know, the earth was down there, everything else that was above it was glacial till, and it was all gone, had been washed out, had been washed down river, then, then in nineteen seventy-three, it happened again, that time, it washed out the wastewater plant. Used to be right down here, closer to, to Route one thirty-one, they destroyed it.
Wow.
It went down the river. And then, of course, the Cavendish, famous Cavendish Canyon, in Irene, and I was, at that time, I was on the Transportation Advisory Council for Chester, and they had the, there was an official from the state, and I, I said, well, you talked about the Cavendish Canyon, and I said, well, you know why that happened, don't you? He said, no, he said, it's because the, the Black River was backed up to the point that it, that it saw a new channel, he said, oh, no. No, that happened because of a feeder stream by where the old school, you know, he said, he said, a culvert backed up and impounded so much water that when it let go, it washed it out, and I just looked at him in disbelief, that's what, that's what they believed. That never happened.
Right. Oh, one thing with our flood hazard regulations, I did the Zoom meeting with John Brooker Campbell last night, he's the floodway engineer, he had some pretty good points.
Yeah.
Basically, yeah, we, if, if the town doesn't enforce their flood hazard regs. We could lose, the whole town could lose the ability to get floods, flood hazard insurance. And he actually, like, mentioned the property. I won't say.
When was that meeting then?
John Brooker Campbell, B R O K E R Campbell, he's a regional flood engineer.
That was a Zoom meeting?
That was a Zoom.
Recorded?
Yes.
Is it possible to watch it?
Probably, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure Jason, they have it.
Because I unintentionally missed it.
Yeah.
I'll check, I can check with Jason.
Okay, and the, like, the flood mapping is from the seventy, nineteen eighty-three, I think, is the last time they did, or even earlier, late seventies, they did the flood hazard mapping, and they're gonna update them now.
Yeah, well, like, the board I was just talking about, I missed last week, the meeting before, when it said, well, that's a floodway. Where they, where they, the, the section by the wastewater plant, if there, if there was an example of a floodway, that would be it, and it wasn't, it was just flood plain, it's a floodway.
Right.
See, they have an, they have the opportunity on that dam, when the water is high, they have flashboards, they can lower them. And of course, a lot more water will go over the top, and it'll relieve the pressure on the, on the setback by the bridge by Mac Molde.
Right.
And keep that from building up to a height that it then seeks a new channel, which is what it's done four times.
Right.
I, I swear sometimes, it's like talking to crows.
Yeah.
All along the Black River, and especially on this side, is that glacial, makes it, isn't it?
The, the, yeah, the till, complete glacial till, that's why there's so much gravel and sand.
It drains well.
Yeah, well, yeah, it, it, it drains fine, but it, but it's also.
Unstable.
Very unstable to, to high velocity water, just, it just runs from it, yeah.
Yeah, pushes everything, because everything's rounded, all the stones are rounded off, so they just tumble. Okay, I think, does anybody have anything else, we can move on to the last item agenda, or second to last?
Which is what?
Any other business?
Oh, I don't.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, if all in favor, motion is passed.